Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the work-study minutes from the July 7th meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. You want to take the roll?
Frank Van Leer? Oh, sorry. Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye. The motion's been passed four to zero.
Make a motion to approve the town council meeting minutes from the July 7th meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye. Motion's been passed four to zero. Thank you. Public comments. Mark?
No request from the door to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. A public meeting. Hey. Police chief wishes to be heard. Street closure.
Mr. President, council members, good evening. Before you tonight to try to do a street closure, what we're doing is National Night Out. It'll be held August the 3rd. It's a Tuesday. From the event times will be from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And I'm asking for a road closure of Wayne Street from Main Street to Clinton Street from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. That'll allow us time to set up and tear down. Should be a good event. The whole town's gonna kinda get involved and get all the kiddos out and all the public out to meet and greet with us. I ask for your guys to consider this and approve this.
Well, if it's anything like the event you just had with the kids in the summer camp, that was really good.
I appreciate it.
That was really good.
Good time. Everybody had a good time.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the police chief's request for a street closure.
Second.
Motion and a second. Courtney?
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye. Motion's been passed four to zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Kickstand. Kickstand, is that your name?
I guess so.
Kickstand, that's an unusual name.
Scott Lynn Lee.
Mr. President, but I didn't receive notification who would be speaking, so I just put the organization.
Did your mother not like you?
It's for the Gunners Show. Shannon Shivern's son passed away. She's got a little over 100 Jeeps coming in on the afternoon of that Saturday. I believe it's August 22nd. We feel like the best, the safest thing to get that many Jeeps in that little urban area is probably to close that street down, allow them to park there for about two, maybe possibly three hours, open the street back up, get them out safely, and of course with the news yesterday of Gary passing, the money that they are raising this year is going to the Danville Parks. So, it's kinda a nice little thing there for them. So, it'd be on August 22nd. I think we'd have it closed from about noon to 3 o'clock. I'd say it'd be about the...
That's a Saturday?
Yeah, Saturday afternoon. Uh-huh, yep. It'd be the North Washington Street there.
Where at? How far north?
We would go, what is that road there? Is that Clinton? Right on the corner of where we're at. Let me see.
So, just right down the corner, that one block?
Yeah.
From Main?
From Main down to Clinton Street, yeah.
Okay.
And there's Washington. And I don't wanna have it closed for the whole day, obviously. I just, just a couple hours to get those Jeeps in and out. So, they have another event coming up in September, but I think we talked about just using all the public parking lots.
Approval, we either wait for the September event, 'cause you did, you came in and asked for that, but...
For our community event. So, they have another one, another benefit that month, too, so.
Any more? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the request from Kickstand Bar to close Washington Street from Main to Clinton for a fundraiser.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Courtney?
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye. Motion's been passed four to zero. Thank you.
Yep, I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Enjoy your closure.
Clarify that as a Sunday, is that correct, that you're asking for? Saturday, so...
The 22nd.
First. Yeah.
Okay.
Park, right? Oh, you've got a concert at the square. Okay. In at the park, so...
They actually threw it on me there yesterday, so...
We don't need to re-vote on that, do we?
I think we're good. We'll, we'll figure it out. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Danville Town Partnership, closure of another. We might as well close all the roads.
The Mayberry Man film is ready to, to be presented, so they're asking for a premiere weekend on Labor Day weekend, September 4th and 5th. The Saturday would start right after the farmer's market ends and then go through the evening until about midnight. They're going to do a VIP event, so red carpet, they'll have, you know, the stars come in and do a premiere that night for select guests, ticketed guests. And then Sunday, they'd like to present it to the community. So, the first showing would be at noon for town council members and people from, from Danville who helped make the movie. And so, you would have a free showing then at 12, 12 noon or at 2:30. So, that would be open to people that, that we would invite for free tickets. And during the day on Sunday, they have asked us to come up with some events on the square, just to draw more people downtown and for people who are there seeing the movie have things to do. So, we're planning sort of a Labor Day picnic kind of thing. And the restaurants around the square would have carryout, like box lunches. You could have a picnic on the square. And we were thinking of doing other things like watermelon eating contests and stuff like that. So, we're asking for the square to be shut down for all of Saturday as well as Sunday. And I, I think it's, I think it's gonna be a really fun event. And the movie producers, they're doing all the planning for Saturday, but they're kind of leaving the Sunday thing to us, so we can kind of plan that on our own and do some really fun things. So, that's what we're asking for approval for.
Will they have real movie stars there?
Well, I guess the real movie stars if they were paid, but...
Is this the grand opening for the Royal?
No. It would be, it will be open before then. Yeah.
I hear it's gonna be very nice.
It is nice, yes.
Any conversation, thoughts?
That's all day Saturday, all day Sunday?
All day Saturday, all day Sunday on Labor Day weekend.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Take it. Anyone?
So, all day Saturday through midnight Saturday. Then Sunday, we wouldn't start activities until then.
So, all day Saturday as in what time? Because we already have one road closure on North Washington, from Main to Clinton for the Kickstand, so just clarification on the time.
So, Saturday after the farmer's market ends until midnight.
Okay, that'll work. Good luck.
Thanks, Andy.
I feel Danville's a lucky town to be able to provide that venue for something like this and many of the other things we do in the center of town. Anybody for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure request from downtown Danville Partnership.
Second.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye. Motion's been passed four to zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Le...
You get to hear from me again, sorry. One more thing.
Okay.
So, as you know, my job is to get people downtown, and I think a really good way to do that is through art and making things more beautiful. So, we formed a committee called Creative Community Pathways. It's a six-step process through the Indiana Arts Commission, and we're kind of structuring our committee and our meetings to sort of meet those goals along the way. But I think we need some momentum. So, I've been speaking to artists at the gallery on the square. One artist has sort of scouted locations around town to create things out of like cracks in the sidewalk or utility boxes or things on buildings like gas meters. And so, in your packet, you'll have some sketches of her ideas. I have checked with Mr. Morgan. I've checked with all the business or the building owners who would be impacted, and the last step is to come to you and ask for approval for these things. The artist is ready to go whenever we are, and the partnership is going to be paying the artist and paying to maintain these pieces of artwork.
Things are up there on the screen. Yes, ma'am.
The utility box that she has made a bookcase out of is on the Courthouse Square, so I went before the county commissioners and asked for approval for that, and that was granted. So, she's going to get started on that right away. She's a really incredible artist, and she works with exterior paint, so she has a process. She knows what primer she needs and what sealant and all of that, so I feel comfortable kind of letting her run with it. The other art, piece of artwork is a mural, and this is a postcard kind of mural, and you'll see them in other cities, but it says, it'll say "Greetings from Danville." As you see, each letter of Danville represents something from the town. This is by Ms. Portio, Katie Portio. She's the art teacher at North Elementary, and she is ready to start this the first week of August. The partnership, again, will be paying her for her time and materials and will be maintaining the mural. This will be on 76 South Jefferson Street, so it's facing Marion Street, just across from the old post office or the probation office now. So, we're asking for approval for the mural and the street art or asphalt art.
So, you might just answer my question. This is probably obvious, but the sidewalk area that you're showing, that's where they're gonna do this art?
Yes.
Is that, is that gonna be a, a permanent thing? Let's stay there? Okay.
Yes. It's not chalk or anything that would wash away.
Okay.
You know what's gonna go in the other L yet?
The, the history museum may be going in the L, but she hasn't confirmed that yet.
Okay.
Do you know of any other towns that have, have this kind of thing?
This kind of thing? Not in Indiana. Yeah. But there, it's out there. I've seen other ideas.
Oh, you got a picture of me there? Okay.
How do we know? Any other questions?
I think it's a great idea.
We don't need to vote on that.
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion.
Because we'll be putting permanent markers on the sidewalks. We probably oughta make a vote.
Okay.
Let me move to approve the, the program of the paintings in Danville that Ann has just brought us from the Danville Downtown Partnership.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye. The motion's been passed four to zero. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Resolution 9, 2021, fiscal plan for annexation, public hearing.
What you have before you is a fiscal plan for property known as Ellsbury and Myers. This is on 300 East between Main Street and 100 North. This fiscal plan does include and will, if you can go to an aerial, originally they came in with an application to annex 138 acres. After the fact, they came back and requested a smaller piece of part, piece of property, which is like, here, show you, right in here. But the annexation had already been started, so you will be hearing that annexation on the 4th of August. But this fiscal plan covers all of the property, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. So, anyway, the fiscal plan does not show any negative impact on taxes within the town. It does show that there will be an additional police officer that will probably likely be required with an estimated cost of $100,000 per year and over, I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not, but it does talk about how that will be paid for through grants and programs. So, anyway, and it's a public hearing, so we need to open it up to the public for any comment.
How many houses?
Let's see. Can't remember how many houses for some reason.
323?
323.
323?
323.
Yes.
So, I have a question about the, sorry, about the police officer addition. Do they, when they're doing this, are they taking into consideration other developments that are coming in as well?
Yes.
Or is it just what does that place, what does that?
Well, I am assuming that they are taking into consideration the other developments, but not 100% sure on that.
Right, so I guess where I'm, so if all of these say we need one more police officer or two more?
Right.
Then if we got five going, we really need five more police officers.
Right.
Right.
In totality, yes.
And this grant that you mentioned that would cover that?
Well, in their fiscal plan, they talk about a grant, and I'm not sure exactly what that is, what type of grant, but that's what's stated in the fiscal plan. Let me see if I can find that.
Is that a one-off?
You got anything on this?
Let's see here. Now, I can't find it. But anyway, that's, that's what it states. And I'm, I'm sure that, you know, assuming through taxes and stuff, that's, I mean, how that gets funded.
Okay.
I've never seen a police grant that usually expands more than five years, have you, Jewel?
Which would give us time theoretically to...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Opening up a public hearing on the finding thing for resolution for Linnor Homes. Anybody have any comments?
My name's Dave Potter. I live at 1947 Knightsbridge Road here in Danville. I attended last week's planned commission meeting, and at that meeting, Mr. Lofton had some questions and comments, which I didn't feel were adequately addressed at that meeting, so I would suggest you ask him to repeat his questions and comments to you tonight for your consideration. Having said that, subject to addressing some of his questions viewed in isolation, I really would not oppose this development, but I think it a mistake to view it in isolation. Already approved are, I think, six developments aggregating approximately 2,000 new homes. To the best of my knowledge, an overall economic impact study or other financial study has not been done to look at the revenue to be generated upon completion of all these developments in relation to the cost of services to those developments. So, I made a couple of guesses. Assuming 2,000 new homes at an average assessed valuation of 325,000 and the current Hendricks County tax levy and the state's 1% tax cap for residential, the town would get about $1,750,000 a year in property tax revenue from all of these once completed. I don't think that would be enough to pay just the payroll cost of the fire personnel, the police personnel, public works personnel, parks department personnel, administrative personnel, notwithstanding the cost of building the buildings, buying the equipment, expanding the infrastructure, developing the parks, et cetera. Looking at schools, the school would get about $3,606,000 of that amount annually once all these are completed. The current cost of the school is about $6,000 per student coming from property taxes. Assuming only one new student for every two homes, which what personally I think is low, but I don't know, let's a guess, but assuming one new student for each 2,000 or each two homes, you're talking about adding 1,000 or more new students to the school. That's $6 million a year based on the current cost. Their share of the property tax revenue is $3,808,000. That leaves them 2,200,000 short every year, and that does not take into account building the new infrastructure and school building to support upwards of a 50% increase enrollment. We're talking potentially four new, four to six new classrooms at each grade level. Keep in mind that a mere two years ago right now, school personnel were going around the district saying they desperately needed $56 million for mere maintenance to the existing buildings. Where's the money for the new buildings? Okay, traffic. Traffic studies have been done for, I know this development as well as Miles Horton. I've studied both of those. I think there are some significant flaws in those, but the biggest one is those traffic studies look at today's traffic patterns and lay on top of it the anticipated increased traffic from this particular development being, being studied. But they don't take into account all the other developments that are being developed at the same time. So, this Balmoral traffic study does not take into account the traffic to be generated by all the other developments that are going on at the same time. I think that's a significant flaw. Also, which I don't understand, both this traffic study as well as the one for Miles Horton projected for the peak traffic hours projected less than two trips per day per household. Okay? Less than two trips per day per household during the peak hours. While about three months ago before this committee, a Mr. Matt Brown, who signed both of those traffic studies, was working with Will on, on a, making a presentation regarding impact fees, and he stood at this microphone and said, "In general, a household would generate 10 trips a day." So, if a household would generate 10 trips a day and less than two trips during the peak hours, that means over eight trips a day in the non-peak hours, that doesn't reconcile. Has that ever been looked into and considered? If it has, not to my knowledge. And last, when you look at all of these in the aggregate, I think they are in significant violation of the current existing town's comprehensive plan, strategic plan, as well as the draft of new plans. And accordingly, until all of these things can be viewed and evaluated in the aggregate, I respectfully ask the committee to deny this proposal. Thank you.
So, if we deny this proposal, we say no, what happens?
The fiscal plan? I don't know, because what's up next is the...
Can they still build there?
Annexation.
Pardon?
Because the next item is the annexation, so I don't know what happens if they don't, if you don't adopt the resolution for the fiscal impact study.
I think he's asking in general the entire project.
So, if you're, so if this is denied, like the annexation and everything, I don't know how this property is currently zoned. I don't know if anything stops them from proceeding to building houses just without oversight of the town. So, the annexation, when you look at the fiscal studies that come into play with, with annexations, it is done to see what the impact is going to be as an estimate as the impact on the town for bringing that property in. You're going to receive new property tax dollars, you're gonna have additional services that need to go there. So, whether or not it functions and is able to handle that. If there's no annexation, if it's just in the county in an unincorporated area, then the county's still gonna have to do it. Nothing prevents them unless there's a zoning, it's zoned differently so that they can't build there. Nothing prevents them from putting that in there. There's no study that needs to be done, things of that nature, just pulling departments and building.
So, if we say no, and they go back to the county, was that county property?
It's, it is currently in the jurisdiction of the county, yes.
And they decide to build with the county, we still have to supply sewers and water?
I don't know exactly where that's located, if it's in the...
It's adjacent to the property.
Okay.
Adjacent to Danville?
Yes. It's adjacent to Four Oaks and Kensington, which is on, actually, it's on West Central Conservancy District, but it's on Danville Water.
So, if we say no, we don't get a lot of the benefits. They still build, they still have the kids going to our schools.
That's correct.
And we get nothing from, I know Avon had a problem with that subdivision. So, where does the problem lie of building all these homes and everything else? Does it lie with the actual owner of the land, and he decides to sell his property to a builder? I'm just making a question out to everybody, think about it. Do we start there and tell the owner he can't sell his land to a property developer?
Well, you can't. I'm trying to tell you that if you try to do that, you can't.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, we can't stop an owner from selling his property to a builder. The things we can do are annex them, try to control what they build, and try to get as much benefit out of it as we can. If we don't do that and they still build, then it's really, we're really out negative, on the negative side of everything. So, we're kinda in a, in a box here. Am I not saying it right, or?
I think you're saying it correctly. And when you look at how we approach and bring these before you, there are three different aspects to this process. The first thing you hear is the fiscal plan. I mean, you've already heard the annexations introduced. You're gonna hear the fiscal plan, then you're gonna hear a annexation proposal, and tonight is the second read on the annexation. At the next meeting will be brought forth the PUD.
Of the property.
And truly where you're going to make a difference. Am I saying that essentially, Jewel?
No, the PUD hearing and the zoning consideration is where you get to exercise control over what is developed, how it's developed, things of that nature. So, it, the major control that comes in is anything that is within the corporate boundaries of the town of Danville has to comply with the ordinances of the town of Danville. So, your ordinances, whether that be, you know, trash and debris, abandoned vehicles, abandoned homes, things of that nature, all of those apply now to that property if it's within the town limits. If it's not in the town limits, then they go into the county ordinances. Along with that is the zoning. So, under your zoning requirements, that's how you can control the, what goes in to that property and how that property's developed. And so, I don't know if I'm answering your question precisely.
No, I just want everybody to hear how I'm thinking. So, basically, if we say no, it has a lot of negative things for Danville if they carry on and build. We can't really stop them from building, can we?
No, I mean, they can, the property owner could sell to a developer and develop it in the county.
Right.
I mean...
And then I guess...
Without Danville's input.
Right. And then one of the points I think you're trying to make, but correct me if I'm wrong, is if that happens, we, we may be compelled to provide X, Y, Z and may not, and like you said, in our school system, and we will not have had the benefit of having anything to say about that.
So, the best...
Could we lose some revenue off of that as well? If it were to go in under that scenario?
Yeah, you would lose the revenue, the tax revenue that's generated. I, I mean, we'd have to dig down to do an analysis of the levies that are associated. So, generally what happens is when you're looking at a county area, there's a certain amount that goes towards the municipality or the governing body. And so, if they're in the county, the county captures all of that stuff. When it is in a corporate boundary, and we'd have to look at the levy and specifically for Danville, the county's usually shrinks and then some comes in for the town. And so, it's not just a sheer stack on top of, because... And so it's not just a sheer stack on top of, because there are services that the county will not be providing if it's within the limits of the town. And so it's a, there's a balancing there. And when you talk about the schools, it's not really, you know, you have no control over the school's budget and what they fund. But generally speaking, when you talk about the property tax dollars off of the annual property tax, the, that you pay on your residence in the spring and fall each year, my understanding of the way that schools are funded is that covers about 15% of, of the operation of the schools in Indiana. The rest of it is based off of your enrollment and is funded through the state's general fund. So the state takes an enrollment count, I think it's like September 15th every year or something of that nature. Depending upon the number of heads that are within that school, that determines the amount of money that the state then gives the school for operation as that share. So it's not, the school is not going to be fully funded off of property tax dollars. It relies most heavily upon the money from the state of Indiana for the operations of its schools.
And on page seven of the fiscal plan, it does talk about the, the circuit breaker and what the, the current is and how that affects, how this development would affect that, the taxes and, and the circuit breaker. And I'd be more than happy to read that if you'd like.
I just want everybody to be thinking like we think. Yes, Mr. Potter?
Could I just make a couple comments?
First of all, I agree with what you just said about the school, and I didn't intend to imply that the entire school budget came from property taxes. What you said is exactly right. Right now, this year's school budget is about thirty million dollars and 2,500 students. So that's about twelve thousand dollars per student. So approximately half of it comes from the state funding, it's purely on a per-head basis. Add a student, you get another six grand, lose a student, you lose six. The other half comes from property taxes. That's what I was addressing. Also, you've mentioned the fiscal plan. It may meet the legal requirements, I don't know what those are, but the fiscal plan really only goes out to 2025, I think. The first house is going to be built in fiscal plan 2023. So when you're, when you're looking at fiscal plan and saying, well, we're only going to have to add one police officer, that's only looking at when you have maybe 20 new homes. It's not looking at the 323 new homes, it's not looking at the completed project. The same thing happened at Miles Horton, it only looked out through 2025. It doesn't look to the completion date and say, what's it going to cost to service this community when it's done? To me, it's of limited, if any, value to only look out to basically the beginning stages and say, that's all it's going to cost to services, because it's just, that's just not valid. Yeah, I don't know what the right answer is, but to me, due diligence requires looking at the completed projects in the aggregate and saying, what's it going to do to our town, our community, our schools? And I don't, if that's been done, I haven't seen it. I've been through all the meeting materials for, for this committee, the planning committee, and I haven't seen it. Maybe you have something that I don't have. But I'm really concerned about what this is doing to our town and our community and our schools. I don't have any kids in a school, it doesn't affect me personally. You know, I'm an old man, it doesn't affect me personally, but I'm concerned that you're really doing something that 10 years from now is going to destroy the community of this town that people here love. That's my concern. I just ask you that you back off and look at the big picture, all of it in the aggregate, the big picture. Don't take this little piece and say, let's just look out four years. Look out to completion for all of them combined. If you haven't done that, I strongly urge you to do it and then make an informed decision. Thank you. Pardon me, Lisa.
I did find the paragraph where it talks about police officers, and what it says basically is constructions to start in 2021 with an anticipation of nine-year completion. It says the town anticipates additional cost-related addition of police department staffing and equipment. Those are estimated to be one hundred thousand dollars per officer per year, starting in pay 2026. It says it's expected that the town will qualify for and submit growth appeals that will increase the levy in an amount sufficient to cover the cost of the new officer. I just wanted to read that just to make sure that everybody understood what that meant.
All right. So taking everything into consideration, and basically, I have no personal, either way, I just want to make whatever's best for the town to happen. And it seems like for us, we're kind of stuck in a quandary here, that it's much better for the town to say yes than it is to say no. Am I not right, or does somebody have?
The developer is here. I don't know if they have anything to say or if you want to hear anything, but they are here if you would like to hear anything they might have to say.
Just a reminder that this public hearing is for the fiscal plan only. So if, if the developer wants to speak on the fiscal plan, I don't know that they actually prepared it, it was actually prepared by O.W. Cronin Associates, but I mean, that's your guys' decision.
Thank you. Good evening. Tony Bugatto with Lennar. And yeah, just to clarify, so tonight, this is the annexation, we will be back August 4th for the PUD. But as part of the annexation, they studied our project within the limits of this scope of annexation. What we see in our annexation fiscal plan, I didn't review the other ones, but from ours, we are, and based on what we know from experience, we're having in Kensington and Four Oaks, you know, our homes are starting from 260 up to 300,000 for the area A, and then in area B, we're anticipating 360 to 400,000. So based on that, this projection shows after the first year, because our initial start will be a little slower, but after that, after year two, after year one, sorry, end of year two, we're projecting 6.6 million worth of assessed value. So half of that goes to the town, so 3 million levy there and 3 million towards the schools. And that's for the build-out of the, of the whole neighborhood over nine to 10 years is what this is planned on. So you're looking at almost 60 million dollars over that 10-year period. So any police officer funding would come, you know, also as it mentions, through a levy appeal with the growth of the community. As mentioned, you know, the schools, they get increased funding when the schools have more enrollment, so this helps offset, you know, that as well. But we see our neighborhood that even if it's looked at individually, we're a higher-end, we believe, area of builder as well as that, that neighborhood. If you've been out there, I mean, there's natural terrain, there's creeks and woods, that brings a real high-end look to that. And, and in the comp plan, it talks about building attractive, high-end homes in the strategic plan, and that's what we feel we're bringing to the market. I don't want to get too much into the PUD because you'll see that August 4th, but we are committing to, you know, no vinyl, it's all hardy plank, we're going to have ease on every home, brick wainscote on 25% of the home front elevations, rear enhancements, especially along the roadways, tree preservation. So we believe that we're, you know, bringing in the best product right from the beginning, best project for the town to consider. And like we said, if it wasn't approved, I mean, I don't know what the county would do, but it is in the county today, so you could still have development there in the future, even if it wasn't us, it could be someone else, and you have no control over that. So just to consider that. And if there's any other questions about the fiscal plan, I could try to, I didn't prepare it, but working with the consultant, I kind of know some of the details. It showed no other impacts to anything else, no impacts to schools, to the roadway, to maintenance and things like that. And again, you get revenue up to 60 million over the 10-year build-out and then continued on assessed value from there.
Kensington in the front, when was that approved by the council?
That was in, was it 18? It was 18.
18?
Yeah. And we got involved in Four Oaks, I think in 215, 2014. We finished out Four Oaks and then got Kensington approved in 18.
I mean, I drive by there, it doesn't look very pleasing. I know it's not finished, and it's a bunch of boxes. But you've upped your game here on the other property because it's hilly and trees and stuff like that.
Yeah, and we watched, I mean, what's been going on with the development and some of the comments on the last Miles PUD. And again, we want to make sure, we've been involved with Four Oaks earlier than some of the developments that's occurred recently, so we wanted to make sure we came into the town and really weren't trying to nickel-and-dime everything. We wanted to bring our best foot forward, and we, that's why we actually kind of waited. We wanted to file sooner, but we wanted to see how the Miles PUD went through. And just after watching that, we wanted to commit to, you know, higher than even what we did in Kensington and what Miles PUD is committed to from what we believe.
Any other thoughts?
I have a general thought. In my lifetime, the population here has tripled. And in that time, all the departments have been fully funded, as far as I know. Fire, police, stormwater, street, you know, wastewater. And they've not only been fully funded, but they've been acquiring better equipment, really good, you know, expensive equipment. The town of Danville has hired employees to run things. And, you know, if you go to a, a town function and you see all the employees in one place, you're thinking, you know, things are pretty good. You know, we're not limping along. And then how has that happened? The schools. I, I think that a lot of the, the emphasis is on the schools because that's a really emotional topic because of children and teachers that, whom we admire. How do they keep going? You know, how, like, how have they built the schools that we build? You know, what happened? Something, something had to happen, the impetus had to happen to get those schools off the ground. I just have confidence that there's, there's an impetus right now to get things going and off the ground. People say, oh, the water company's not ready for all these homes. Well, there's water, there's a lot of water. They need to get ready. And this might just be, you know, the thing that, that starts a new level of, of, you know, good times. Even though everything's more expensive now, there's a whole lot more government regulation and a lot more fines, fees and, and, and things that, that are paid now that weren't paid, that weren't even thought of back in the day. And how do we, how do we manage to keep all that stuff paid? We just have. Because if, if we didn't, we wouldn't be functioning as a town. I just have, I just have a lot of faith in the process and in the people who are running the town and in the, and in also the idea that all this stuff is not happening in one fell swoop. It's not just going to all appear and all these people are going to need utilities and everything all, all in one day. It's going to happen over a gradual amount of time, and I think that's good. That being said, you know, I'm not just willy-nilly for growth, for, for growth's sake. But you know, when we're faced with these, the applications that we get, you know, we've got to be discerning and we've got to make a, a level-headed, level-headed decision. Can't just pop off and say, no, go away, you know, we're done. That's it.
Mr. President, you'll need to gavel the meeting closed if you're done taking comments.
Meeting's closed? Back to the public meeting? So we need a, we need a vote. I have a motion. So I have a motion, so...
Well, I'll move that we accept resolution number 9, 2021. The supervilluntary annexation.
I have a motion. We'll have a second.
Thank you.
A motion and a second.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been approved, four to zero. Thank you very much. Okay. Ordinance 162021, annexation of 569 North, CR 300 East.
This is actually for the adoption of the ordinance of the property we just discussed. It does not include, as I said earlier, the 2.93 acres. That will be coming back to you on August the 4th.
Okay, any thoughts, anybody?
I have a, actually I have a question for you guys, so if one of you wants to, a couple of questions.
Sure. Yep, Tony Bugatto again with Lennar.
Hi, Tony. So I guess, first of all, I, we've seen a handful of these types of plans over the last few months, and if we were to isolate this one, I think this is a really good one. And I appreciate the proactive nature that you guys took after hearing the discussion with previous developer. Because that, that tells us you're really kind of listening to the community and want to make sure that you're a good partner. Just a couple of things, and, you know, there was one, so on the, on the, on the, I don't know what the actual word would be, like the rear, the rear vacades along, I think, is that 300 where the most of that back, okay. I wonder if it would be possible to have a frontage road there and possibly flip those homes around rather than having, I know it's not plain, plain Jane, but just having plain back homes on that, that main road right there. I didn't know if that was anything you guys would, would consider. And then if, if that isn't something that you're willing to do in section 3.3, the design standards, I'm sorry if you can't hear me, the design standards, number 12, and maybe you can enlighten me on why it's only 25%, but is it possible to move that to 100% where we require those folks on that back? If we're not going to have the frontage road to do something so that it's just not a, a plain-looking back of the house there?
Yeah, I mean, I can address a couple of those. So the, the frontage road option, I mean, with this site in the creek and the woods, it's something that would be very challenging. We had contemplated that after the line commission meeting, but we would lose a significant number of lots to try to maintain the openness and obviously the look and feel of what we're trying to create in this community around that environment. So for the architecture, and it maybe gets a little confusing, so on all the homes standard, even without that 25% commitment, all of them have an option for, already have a four-sided brick or a brick wainscote, patio cover, a deck, a screen and porch. So in addition to that, we went ahead and committed that 25% more would have those additional features as well. So even if someone picked like the additional brick and they wanted to also have that 25% requirement, they would have to add a porch to that as well. So we feel that we're already giving the homes rear articulation or at least architectural features from the beginning, and then beyond that, 25% more of the homes would have additional features or have to double up if they didn't, if they already had one of those features. And in addition to that, we're having the landscape buffer providing, you know, the landscaping and to help with that as well.
So I, I did speak with you guys previously, so this might be a repeat question. You are building these homes prior to having buyers, or is that, or are you creating inventory as opposed to?
Correct. Based on today's, the way that's, yeah, working today's market, it's house building.
Okay, because I was going to ask, how do you determine which 25% of those homes have to comply with that? But that's something you're predetermining upfront?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know if Keith can answer the better. I mean, we do, at the framing levels, when we start talking to the buyer, so there's still time for changes. It's not, they're not done and then you pick it.
Okay.
If you want further, Mr. Winters. Yeah, Keith Lash with Lennar. Yeah, one of the things we do when we develop a, a community is we create home site specifications. So for each home site, we specify maximum width of the home, maximum depth, if it should be a left-hand or right-hand. In this case, we would specify, and that's before we even start selling homes, we would specify which homes would have that articulation. And, and there are, if you look at it, there's, there's not expansive runs of homes, there's, at the south, there's four homes that back up, and then as you work your way north, there's, I think there's eight or 10, then there's none, there's eight or 10, then six. So that's how, we picked the 25%. One of the things we, we strive to is that... One of the things we, we strive to is that streetscape diversity on the front, which is why we have different elevations and brick quantities. On the rear as well, I, I can point you to communities where they are a hundred percent and you end up driving down, it's very monotonous. It's morning room, morning room, morning room. So, you don't end up, really what, what you're trying to strive for, I believe, is that not a wall of facades. And so, by doing one every four and then some builders, or we may select more morning rooms depending on what we're hearing from our buyer profiles. So, we'll let the market dictate some of it, we'll predetermine some of it and we'll commit to some of it, if that helps. And, and Mr. President, I would agree that one of the things we did at Kensington, getting off subject here, but, but you made the comment and I would address that, is when we, when we zoned Kensington, it was already, part of that was already zoned with Four Oaks back in two thousand and five with the county. And we brought in a little bit of additional acres and we just, we utilized the standards that were in place. And that had perimeter landscape requirements. It did not have rear articulation requirements. And so, when we pre-panel and set up the community, it was something that, it wasn't on our radar because it wasn't a commitment. And that's how, what you see is what, how it was accomplished, which is not how we prefer to develop our communities. And so, if we, hindsight, we would've thrown some morning rooms in there and created that, those offsets that you're looking for.
I know every time I go by there.
It was just a byproduct of how that thing ended up getting zoned. It was already zoned, the northern half was zoned and we just added the western piece to that zoning. And the standards were not in the, in the underlying zoning and we just missed it. I apologize for that.
Thank you for that.
Superintendent Lofton would like to add.
Well, I was getting ready to say, is there, if anybody from the town would like to add anything?
He's about to come out of his chair. So.
So, at the plan commission meeting, I think I made it really clear what we really requested and even before that, we, we kinda wanted to do something unique with this subdivision because, and Four Oaks is a phenomenal subdivision. You have a lot of good things there, the frontage road, you have a golf course layout, you know, type of feel, it's, it's an excellent subdivision. That subdivision was brought in allowing vinyl. And Lennar, Ryland, CalAtlantic, which all those were, they changed names, made the decision to do all masonry exterior. Phenomenal. My biggest point and, and a lot of the problem that I have is not with the builder or the developer or how they treat themselves, how they treat the town, it's more of the physical layout of this subdivision. My issue is, I think these lots are too close to the road. I don't think we have enough buffering. I don't think we have enough mounting high enough. If we're going to allow the back of these homes to face one hundred and three hundred, that's where you come into the town of Danville. That's what you're gonna see. I think we need to do something unique and maybe we go back and work on this a little bit more, but that, that's kinda where I'm coming from because if you look at this higher end subdivision, we're actually closer to the right-of-way than Kensington is. Now, I, there's not houses on these lots, but I can tell you that corner of three hundred and one hundred, the way those lots are laid out, if they put a fence and they put sheds a la, I don't think sheds are allowed in this subdivision, but if we put fences in there, they're probably gonna be behind the buffer yard and the mounting. I think my request would be that we kinda massage that i- if the developer's willing to listen to what we have to say as far as, maybe we, we kinda bring back and, and say, and, and then again, we're not talking about zoning right now, but here we are talking about it because it's critical. Because when you approve annexation, you are approving the ordinance, the PUD of that. So, i- it's not right now, but I would like for them to come back to the staff and say, hey, you know, what more can we do? And, you know, I don't wanna speak for the council, but the bottom line is, is if you look at Four Oaks from thirty-six, beautiful. They had the benefit of having two trees in the front of that that are over a hundred years old, so that does make a difference. My other point is, is when they plant trees out there on these buffer yards, it's gonna take twenty years before they start actually screening the subdivision. They are screened to a degree, but I asked for a little bit more and I, I think, you know, we wanna make this unique, we wanna make this subdivision an icon for the town like Four Oaks is, you know, I, I say that's one of the best developments that we have. But I think with everything that we've, from a plan commission member's point of view, I think we need to, do need to have diversity. I'm a fan of PUDs, but I'm also a fan of making every communit- community unique and that, that's hard, but it's important. Otherwise, we don't need to approve PUDs, other than the fact that our development standards aren't very high on our, our regular zoning. Really, that's what I have and there's a lot tied to that, there's a lot of ways we can make it better. That's really all I have to say.
Barry, are you suggesting that we table the annexation?
Um, I don't think, I don't think that would stop the zoning. I think between now and the zoning meeting, I think we need to have more discussions about the development.
Would the developers be willing to have some additional conversations with town staff?
Yeah, we always welcome those conversations, absolutely. I think we've, we've proven to date that we're willing to have those conversations. We've made a lot of modifications through the process and we would be open to discussions with, with staff, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Over the comments. They will gavel out.
This is up for adoption tonight, sir.
Looking for a motion to approve or disapprove sixteen, twenty, twenty-one.
So, Barry, if I may ask one question, Barry, you're saying approval of the annexation will not impede what you're wanting to discuss with the developers?
I do not believe so. When we come back.
We haven't rezoned it yet.
Yeah, when we come back to do the rezone, that's whenever this ordinance needs to be buttoned up because it will become recorded.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to pass ordinance sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, request for annexation.
Second.
Motion and second. Courtney.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been approved, four to zero. Thank you. Ordinance twelve, twenty, twenty-one, amendment to salary ordinance, clerk treasurer.
Would you like me to wait, sir?
Talk for the clerk treasurer.
Yes. Would you like me to wait till you're signing or, I mean, go ahead and go?
That'd be too soon. We're done in a second.
Ordinance twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one was first read at our last meeting on July seventh, it was introduced. It's up for adoption tonight. This is to again, correct some mistakes, I don't know if mistakes are the correct word, in the salary ordinance for the fire department and the clerk treasurer's office.
I do have one question and this may not be fair, so just tell me if you don't know. I think we've had a handful of these corrections to the salary or, salary ordinance. What, why, why do we have those?
Usually what occurs is that something may have been omitted in the first ordinance and then it was found later on.
Okay.
You'll have another one coming up, and I can't remember if it's actually on the salary ordinance, but like Barry just hired a new employee, so we'll have to do a phone stipend for that employee, so that will require an amendment to the ordinance because we hired a new employee. So, a lot of it has to do with either changes in structure, like the fire department. I think, he's not, Rob actually had proposed this to, he eliminated two captains and traded him off for two lieutenants. And I think, you know, that's why this is coming up tonight, is to help him to restructure his department and the clerk had the facility aid in there as well. Again, these are positions that may have been approved, but didn't get into the budget initially.
So, his, the, the request, his request to change those positions was approved already previously? Okay. All right.
It's actually gonna cost us less money in the long run?
Yeah, I figured. Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve ordinance twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, amend salaries and other compensations.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Courtney.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been passed, four to zero.
Will, are you playing again?
He was removing a device from the computer and the computer's reminding him to do it correctly.
It was recess or something.
Yeah.
All right. Last on the agenda today for ordinances, ordinance twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, request for annexation, twenty-one oh four East Main Street. Lennar.
As you said, this property is on twenty-one oh four East Main Street and the petitioner is Allison and Jaclyn Bianchi. They are asking to annex into the town of Danville for municipal services, water and sewer, and this is just for introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Okay, counted, introduced.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yes, sir. In your packets, you'll find the police department's monthly report. Try and get to his first. Police department, their golf outing went very well. They did get eighteen holes in before it rained, minus two golf cart crashes. The four H fair started this week, obviously they'll have officers helping with traffic. Police and fire camp was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and today was their graduation ceremony and they did an outstanding job. I think the kids had a great time. They had a fabulous keynote speaker. Sorry, it was me. And Kennedy Wilson has been released and is now patrolling on her own. The planning department is getting ready, was getting ready for BZA. They're working on adding, adding language to the annexation ordinance that will allow right-of-way for the town to make necessary improvements such as sidewalks. We think this is a good addition to our annexation so that we now will have wording that can say, we wanna build a sidewalk on your property and we'll have that there. So, issued Stratford Ridge entrance sign permit for the replacement of the damaged sign. Received a variance application for a fence height that's scheduled in August. Preparing text amendment that will require all final approvals for development to go before plan commission. Again, we think that'll clean up the process quite a bit, so make good use of the newly purchased printer and plotter scanner. The fire department, as you can tell, I had them actually send me reports this time, it's making things so much easier. Responded to thirty-four runs, they're at a total of one thousand seventy-three, which is two hundred and eleven runs up from last year. They also have been engaged in police and fire camp. A fair for EMS coverage. Thursday, they've got a local pension board meeting. I think they've got some new additions, that there are new people that are, they're sending to the pension board. And they had a meeting with a concerned citizen about the operation of the fire department. In their opinion, it went well. Mr. Potter, would you agree? The fire department believed that the meeting with you went well. Did you agree? The water department, they'll be out installing radio meters this week for reading software on the routes, new meter installs. South Jefferson Laundromat, there's a project going on there. They're rehabbing an existing meter pit, installing a new meter. I can't remember how old Matt said this was, but they're not even sure, thirty-plus years, they don't even know if the company exists anymore. They said it's actually, will probably be an antique and they will keep it in that aspect. They kinda found it by mistake, to be honest with you, so. They're doing some landscaping at a test well site, wellhead maintenance and water level monitoring and they've been working in Camden Creek, section two, in the final process of their water infrastructure, they're doing some sampling. Waste water's been installing fence around the Woodfield lift station. They've been installing chemical back flush piping. They submitted a new permit application, been doing lifts, chasing checks. They ran the belt press for three days and then they have one employee on vacation. Department of Public Works, they're hoping to finish the square alley concrete there on the south side between Marion and Broadway. They've been patching town utility cuts in the streets, performing sample, sample coring on Heritage Drive in preparation for a mill and overlay. They are participating in painting this week and they touch truck, the four H fair. Superintendent Pitcher had a great idea. He'll be taking a snowplow to the fair for the kids to touch and they're going to be allowed to paint the front of the snowplow so that they can paint pictures and everything. He has asked out of the watercolor paint so that it can be removed if, if necessary. Continuing to raise tree canopies as time allows in preparation, school buses, and then in he, we installed a little library, it was one holdout from previous administration and it was installed in front of one fifteen South Jefferson Street where a tree had been removed, so it was a good replacement. It's about to be, right, yeah. Stormwater department, he, he has hired, has finally hired his new building inspector, he's on board. So, thank you, Barry. Sinkholes continue to show up all over the core of town because of the water we've received, obviously. Polymer pipe continues to be difficult. He'll probably be coming to the next meeting with another capital expenditure request. He's already burnt through the pipe that he bought at the last capital expenditure request. Maintenance and painting currently is underway at the police department. They have seven new single-family residential building permits issued. Northwood Haven is in pre-construction meeting, is scheduled for July twenty-second. Goodwill Site is moving along, working with the location on the sidewalk. The North Elementary addition is continuing when school reopens and we've had issues with power lines that are slowing the old Danner site there at the fast tracks. So, they're trying to work with Duke, I think, is that correct? Yep. Last but certainly not least is the parks department. While we have the floor, we'd like to introduce our new community engagement coordinator, Madison Henderson, if she would stand. Most of you know Madison, I'm sure. I think a- as we told you when we were advocating for this position, we do believe we're doing a good job here at the town of Danville. We've just not been telling our story very well and we've hired Madison to tell our story. So, thank you for joining, Madison.
I know, stiff competition.
Yeah. Will's been working with traffic committee, he's got, he's moving that along probably towards the end of this week. He has been working on the fountain in the square to see if he can get that repaired.
About that, Mark?
I just don't know.
I got separated.
I mean, it, it's a mess. That's all I could say, is he's, he's got his work cut out for him. He's been working on getting the donations and items for the football tower, working on a permit for his, a banner holder. We've decided to clean up a little bit, Fidel Hill, I don't know what else to call it, but we had a, a banner holder actually made, it's made out of tube steel and the banners will be required to be a specific size to fit on that, so they'll look a lot nicer. We won't have banners draped here and there and looking all funky and the one thing, we probably won't control a whole lot is political signs, but at least with the other signs, they'll look really nice once Will's got it done. We're working on the National Night Out, which is August the third. As you guys know, Chief Hilton asked for that date and we've opted to have an open house, you all agreed that you wanted to have an open house. And the committee has suggestion for the council, mind you- Mind you, it's a suggestion. We know we can't dictate what you do. But we think it would be a good idea, as the department had set up their booths, that the liaisons are with the departments. That way, you're there with your department head, you kind of see what, you know, questions they get, but the public still has access to you to ask questions. Do you guys have any thoughts on that either way? Is that okay with you? Or, like I said, it's just a suggestion by the committee.
Who's doing the catering?
Jim? Food trucks, that's right. We have got food trucks coming in. And they don't have to have permits because they're associated with a town event, so before that starts, I don't want to hear it, okay? The, Will's been working on finishing his budget worksheets. He's working on bollards and crosswalks for the park because he doesn't like what he received. Is that right? Yep. And organizing the workshop. Tell me about that. Because I don't remember what the workshop is. You wrote it.
Oh, yeah, just started.
Okay. They're cleaning up their garage, so. And then the last thing I have on my end, if you were not aware, we didn't make it real public until about last week. Melin Heron, our office manager, turned in her resignation. Today was her last day, and so we are now in the process of an applicant search for that position. And that's all I have.
Hey, round the horn?
You have anything, Will? You have anything?
Yeah. It's not on the sheet.
I know, I know, I know. We did have a staff member pass away over the weekend, so he served 25 years with the Parks Department. He's kind of a quiet guy, so we're not going to do anything crazy, but we are going to do some sort of memorial in the future. But prayers to his family, for sure, and just when you see the park guys, just lend them an ear if you can, so it's a little hard to go around today, so thank you.
And you did opt to have a?
Yes, and we are having the park board meeting. She wanted to have. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to pray for Tammy, because it's her brother, the park board president. Sad, sad news. Real quick, I want to make one comment before I get into the more fun stuff. I had a chance to talk to Jenny today. I understand that she's not feeling well, and she did not sound like she was feeling well. So certainly hope that she gets back on her feet real soon. We've missed a couple of very important budget meetings, and she's kind of the person that we need to talk to. So Jenny, if you hear this, hope you get to feel better soon, and hope to see you back. Madison, welcome. This position, finally. The police and fire camp, I heard that was really good, and, you know, that, I know it was a big hit two years ago when I first learned of it, and thanks, Chief Hilton, this is really cool. And I think that is all I have.
Now that, I know I mentioned this at a meeting that we had in the gym that one night, but that was kind of anticlimactic after that meeting that we had. But I am on the Creative Community Pathways Committee, just wanted to reiterate that, the one that Andrew Hansen got up and talked about tonight with the murals and all that stuff. And it's, it's a really good committee to be on. There are a lot of artistic people on this committee, and they've got really good ideas, and it seems like they're, they're acting on them really fast, which is what I like. And, yeah, kudos again to, to Chief Hilton on the, and Rob Roberts, Chief Roberts also for the camp that they put on. It was really, it was really cool. And welcome to Madison.
Real quick, for the record, Kickstand is requesting Sunday, August 22nd. Welcome, Madison, and don't give all the props to the police and fire camp, to the chiefs. Nate Lean does a fantastic job, and I was there yesterday. I wish I could have gone to camp all three days. It was, the kids absolutely love it. I've got a coworker that was there with me yesterday that did the safety presentation. He saw a little kid at football practice last night, and he said, do you work at Hendrick's Power? I goes, oh, yeah. You're the guy that blew up the hot dogs. So they absolutely love that camp, so let's continue to do that. It's, I was there two years ago, and it got better this year, so fantastic job.
Well, I'll just follow on with what Chris said. I was there the first day and gave a little talk at the end of the camp. What I saw was amazing with the fire department and police department has done is just wonderful. After I had a little few chats there, I, they were waiting to see the hot dog exploder man the next day. So I don't know what we can call Chris, if they have some Greek god named Thor of lightning, but it is a very impressive presentation the electrical department puts on. And you guys ought to be commended on your camp. I'd like to wish Jenny that she gets well. We haven't seen her for a few days and that, and I hope she gets better. And Gary Watson, I'd like to say something about him. I used to stop in the park and try to say hi to everybody, and Gary was a quiet man, and he, I think he had a dry sense of humor. He was always polite. He was always working, and it looks like he died quietly this week. I just want to say what a great person he was, and what a great employee he was for the town. He was sure to benefit Danville, and he will surely be missed. And congratulations, Madison, is it? Okay.
Mr. President, there is one thing I did forget. I hate to follow up after that. You had asked me to check with legal counsel on a topic.
Yes.
Reference elections, and I didn't know if you'd had an opportunity to look into that yet.
Yeah, we looked into it. There may be a road moving forward to do this. It's not an easy road moving forward, but what we're going to do is just kind of white paper everything out, say, here's step one, here's step two, here's step three, and everything you would need to do to try and change the election cycles.
Since it's a small primary for us, we're trying to save some money. You know that.
Right, right, and it's, I understand that completely. It would be a savings from now, moving forward, every election cycle, because you would run on the regular one. But this, what needs to be understood, and we have to look at the timing, is that the people who would be running would have a shorter term. So they would not have a full four-year term if we did a change like this.
Won't get an extended term?
They will not get an extended term. They will get a shorter term.
Claim document.
Make a motion to approve claim document.
Second.
Motion second. Everybody approve? Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Now I'm pulling one of your tricks.
Thanks, mate.
Second.
Motion in the second. Have consensus to close the meeting?
Aye.
Meeting closed. Thank you for coming, everybody.